...session. We'll introduce everybody here, starting over here. You just introduce yourselves as we go along.
Jeffrey Stevens, Councilmember, Ward 1.
Kevin Kellogg, City Councilman, Ward 1.
I'm Sonya Abdalgabad and I'm on the City Council for Ward 4.
I'm Bob Berry and I'm a Councilmember for the Arts Commission. I'm sorry, Commissioner for the Arts Commission.
Pat Stetser, I'm here with the Arts Commission.
Jay Holman, Councilmember, Ward 3.
Harriet Lawrence, I'm with the Arts Commission.
Desiree.
Jason Boehner, Councilmember, Ward 3.
Joe Burke, Councilmember, Ward 2.
Derek Moorhead, Councilmember, Ward 2.
Sharon Paris, Arts Commission, Ward 1.
Charlene Hubach, Ward 4, and I'm a lifetime resident and I want to see action.
Pete Kirkoff, Mayor.
Jim Fearborn, City Manager.
Meredith Howe, Assistant City Manager.
All right, the first item in the meeting tonight is the joint meeting with the Arts Commission. Want to take it?
Sure. Thank you, sir. What, what, I think the council, what their goal was tonight was to start putting some Arts Commission faces to names that they've been, that they've been charged with, and give you your charge as far as kind of what the council envisions for the Arts Commission. And any member of the council who thinks I'm way out of line here, just come down here and turn my mic off. That, you know, that it's a brand-new, it's a startup. The genesis for this came from discussions concerning artwork that might or might not be in our new roundabout feature. And the council kind of got excited about the discussion of public art and how far that could go and what public art really means, performance arts, public art, as far as display art is concerned. All of that was kind of on the table during the discussion that evening. And we got back with the, staff got back with the council on the possibilities that could exist for proceeding with that vision that the council had. And that led to the posting that you all were generous enough to respond to. That brings us to tonight. I suppose one of the things that staff would be looking for so that we can proceed is for everybody at the table to come to an agreement on what the council envisions for the Arts Commission, what perhaps some of the commissioners see as vital things that they could bring to the table. And then we, the staff wants to kind of be able to wrap things up with some of those dirty administrative details as far as how we might be able to proceed once that discussion takes place. Staff kind of envisioned this, I kind of envisioned this as a freewheeling idea, kind of a brainstorming discussion between all of yous to move this forward. That would conclude the original staff reports.
Any comments?
You know, I'm very open-ended about this. And, you know, one of the things I noticed, if any of you saw in the paper over the weekend, Arts KC set a fundraising goal for half a million dollars this year. So, a lot of communities have realized the value of art. You know, that recreation in your community does not just have to be athletic. And there is a lot of value for the arts, both visual and performing arts. And Raymore is now kind of at a size and, and especially being a lot of residential stuff that could utilize this kind of outlet. And so, I really am happy to, to see this. I know that, also going even back to our growth management plan discussions, a lot of the community groups coming together, were saying, "We'd like to see more connectivity, but not just, you know, do things together and to enjoy things together." I know our motto, city motto, talks about living, working, and playing. Well, you know, I, I see and envision this council, as the commission, as something that can bring a smile to people. And, you know, unfortunately, as council members, and I'll criticize only myself, you know, we tend to look at the rules and the numbers and the budgets and we, you know, I really hope that the commission can be people who can think outside of that box and look at the aesthetics of things and, and appreciate more of that kind of substance. So, I'm excited about this. So, it's wonderful to see this kind of taking shape and taking form.
Other comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, something I, I kind of look at in here, as far as things that I'd like to see, I'd like to see them hold events like Arts in the Park, or starving artists, or arts and craft shows and stuff, and not so much commissioning art projects at taxpayer expense, you know, things that would actually bring people into our community.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also am very excited about this. When we started discussing this was during the roundabout subcommittee meetings and that, and a lot of the discussions as to what that could take on and what an art commissions could bring to the city or help us, you know, do what our goals were. And part of our goals as the City Council, going back, I believe, two years ago, was city beautification. And I feel that this fits into that, not just beautifying our right-of-ways and stuff like that, but adding aesthetics to intersections, to different places of interest in this, similarly to like what we have down at Memorial Park with the roundabout that's down there, with those sculptures down there. When we got into the roundabout subcommittee, our discussions went lateral. And we, on the subcommittee, which Sonya served with on, with me, and so did former Councilman Ryan Westco, we discussed involving the community as a whole, even the students of Raypek, professionals in the area, reaching out to professional communities in, in the arts community. And then we says, "Well, is this just something that we're, we're thinking of aesthetically, like a sculpture?" No, we determined it wasn't. We view as, and I, I'm speaking for the subcommittee, because this was the consensus. We viewed the, when we talked about arts, visual arts, we talked about performing arts, we talked about all kinds of different kinds of arts. So, when we talk about arts, it's not inside of a box. And I'm going to say this, that our consensus was, is that when, if and when at that point we would have an Arts Commission, that we would advocate that you folks would be able to make those decisions. You would take it to wherever you felt it needed to go, or where you wanted it to go. We were going to step back and see where that went. And I think you are going to get that support from this council, you know. It's, the discussions that I've had with my colleagues is very, very, very supportive, you know. I haven't seen the kind of excitement as far as community involvement, getting excited and throwing their names in to volunteer for something until this came up. When the staff posted the, the notices, we got three or four, three or four, I don't, applications within the very first day, you know. And so, it, I'm, I'm very pleased to see that. And then, from the caliber and the experience that everybody had sent in, it was amazing to me that there was that kind of interest. So, I think that the time is right, you know. There was discussions that we had that you may or may not know that when a development comes into Raymore, there is a certain percentage of land in any development area that is designated and dedicated for public land. Okay, so when you see the, the trails in, in one of the subdivisions, that's city property, that's, that's that 10% of that property that is required to be donated. We are at the point now that we feel that instead of having that, that one avenue of dedication of something, why not have like what Kansas City has, that give the developer the ability to, or the choice to donate to for public art? So, that is on the table. Another thing that came into discussion is also a nonprofit 501, am I correct, 501, 501(c), thing, kind of like the Parks Foundation does. You know, these are all discussions that I would expect that would be taking place. And you have, in my, in my support, that freedom to do that. I, you know, you have my total support to make this as big or as grand as you want. And I would hope you do, and I suspect you will. So, I guess, I, without trying to belabor this, I, I'm just really, really excited. And I think you've got a lot of support on this council to do what you need to do.
Sonya?
I'll, I'll follow that with agreeing with a lot of what Kevin said. We, we did, we talked a lot about art and bringing art into the city, working on the roundabout committee. And we talked about, in our council meetings, talking about starting the commission. We talked about all different kinds of art. So, as far as kind of pointing you in a direction of what are we picturing, we have huge dreams. And so, some of the things that we talked about, going back to what I think Jason Boehner said with the setting goals for the city and that sort of thing, we talked about, you know, what are some things we can do in Raymore to make Raymore a destination, to make it a place where people want to come? And, you know, we, part of that discussion included talking about the fountains in Kansas City. Some people come to Kansas City to see the fountains and, you know, could we do something original here that would be something that people would want to come for? And that came up in our roundabout committee meetings as well. Having something fabulous in that roundabout that people can see from the highway, you know, what, what a great draw that would be to bring people into Raymore, and then to make it something that goes throughout the city. Another thing we talked about in the roundabout committee was maybe pieces of art that start in a, a place like the roundabout and then maybe move through town. And so, it, it's here for a while and then it turns into another piece of art on a trail or in the park or in front of a business, things that are movable, things that bring in all different parts of the community. We would, I would love to see classes for kids, for families, for adults, you know, organizing that sort of thing besides just having visual art in the city. Performers at the farmer's market, that's something that our Parks Department has provided there, and I don't know if that's something that eventually maybe you guys could help with. I think, kind of like I said, our dreams are big. Probably your biggest thing to begin with is where to start. We have big visions and hope you guys do too. And want to let you know that you have our support, just figure out where to start. And like Ms. Hubach said, let's, let's get this thing started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to voice some of the sentiments of former Councilman Ryan Westco. One thing that he talked about a lot in the roundabout subcommittee is, you know, personally involving our students, very, very passionate about that. So, you know, I, I would advocate his, his voice in that. Another thing that, that he brought up was, that he spoke about, he remembered so well, and I remember it too, because that was shortly after I moved to Kansas City, to the Kansas City area, was an event that, that happened in many cities around, around the country. Specifically, the one that he talked about was in Kansas City with the different sculptures of, of the cattle, the cows and that. And he envisioned that, you know, something like that, to where, you know, we, we could have an event like that, you know. And I would think that would fit into the, the realm or the scope of, of the Arts Commission, you know, fostering that, that type of arts event. So, you know, keep that in mind. And like I say, that, I'm not going to take credit for that. That was Mr. Westco's kind of passion, and, and I agree with it, you know. Like Sonya and I have said, anything's on the table, you know. And I appreciate Mrs. Hubach saying, "Get with it."
As a new resident to this community, I've been here almost a year now, but I was very excited to participate in this Arts Commission. And coming from upstate New York, we were well endowed with the arts, all forms of art, art. I, I worked a lot with youth orchestras and historic properties, music, classical, jazz. And we had Saratoga Springs, which was one of the best venues for the performing arts that you could get. The New York City Ballet used to come there, the Symphony. What I was really excited about was this community, because I moved here to be with my grandkids. And I have wonderful grandchildren, and I really wanted to instill in them the vision that they should look to help their community grow, both not on, not only on sports venue, but music and art. And so, I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I belong to the Tri-County Art League, and I'm telling you, there are wonderful artists in that league. And I'm hoping that we can, you know, combine our efforts with that Art League and Historical Committee and community to help develop all these things you all have dreamed about. So, I'm excited about it.
That's one of the things that has really kind of pushed me forward with this whole thought, is this, this idea of drawing from the strengths of our communities in the surrounding areas to produce something that's unique, that's a differentiator between us and, and some of the surrounding metropolitan areas. As I've thought about this commission and about, about Raymore over the last 12 years, living here, and the things that my family and I have missed, missed out of this community, what I, what we've missed most is, has been the arts. My kids are in a, in a, in a city symphony outside of this town. I have two violinists and a flute player that are out doing their thing. And I know that my family is not the only one that misses that. And these type of activities, the, the type of environment where the arts are elevated to a position of prominence and importance within the community, places that, that do that reap enormous benefits in the happiness and the well-being of their citizens. And so, for myself, that's, that's why I have supported this and been strongly vocal about wanting us to move forward. And that's kind of where my vision is, is for us to be very inclusive and to draw very heavily upon the talents that are here. And then, to invite the people of Raymore to participate, whether it's in a community theater, or in a community philharmonic, or any of those activities, and, and an arts festival, a jazz festival, anything that we can get to pull the members and the talents that we have among us and bring it together, and to share together those things that are so important and drive us and make our lives so much better.
Well, I'm, it's thrilling to hear all the enthusiasm. And I will say, after reading the handouts that were sent to us, I was a little concerned because Blue Springs is all about public art and art in public places. And obviously, that vision is much bigger here. Obviously, we've got some nuts and bolts kind of work to do, but the possibilities for funding and support are so vast, probably more than we, I mean, than any of us can identify right now. But the one thing that the Blue Springs Art, Public Art Commission or whatever did that I thought was great was to get Missouri Arts Council to fund a, a mission statement and, and to help them through this process that we've now been charged with. And it seems to me, if Blue Springs can do it, we can do it too. And I did go on to the Missouri Arts Council site, and, and it is one of the things that they are sort of mandated to do. So, I think that would be a very early thing for us to, to do, is to see what support we can get for the planning process that we obviously have to go through. But we do have the one event, Arts in the Park, or Art in the Park, that happened last June in the, in the farmer's market area. And I think we have a celebration coming up for the development of the park there. So, we may actually have some initial project to undertake even while we're developing a much larger mission statement. And whatever that, whether we become a 501(c)(3) or, I'm not sure, under the city charter, what we could do to receive all the funds that we could as a 501(c)(3). Excuse me, that's sort of a pivotal decision at this point, too.
And as a matter of fact, at the end of this, when we got to those administrative matters, I think, first of all, if I could introduce Mr. Gene Thompson behind us, he is our Economic Development Director. And Ms. Dana Sider, Dana will actually be the, the Administrative Assistant Staff Support to you all. And Ms. Howe, sitting to my left, our Assistant City Manager, will actually be the, the Administrator in charge of being the liaison to the group to help you through things, get things scheduled, get rooms scheduled here, assist in any sort of background work that you all need done. It was going to be staff's recommendation to actually start with contact to the MAC to see what the availability was as far as grant funding is concerned. If, if we could not get the grant from them, which it sounds like they are very enthusiastic about getting these started, we would, the City Council has budgeted in this particular, in this fiscal year, $10,000 in support of those sorts of activities of the commission. So, we would have one of, two of those routes to begin the administrative process of getting things together. And there are also those other things that are hanging out there that are occurring this year that we could bring in, the staff who were in charge of them from last year to work with you all, to see how we might enhance those events and, and, yep, in essence, I guess, put you to work right away on some items. But one of the things that, that is, that goes with that grant from the MAC is getting yourself written into code. All of our boards and commissions are described in code. That's, that's a critical starting element. But after the, after this component of the meeting, I'm going to be asking Ms. Howe to, if she could just informally meet with the members of the commission out in the lobby for a few minutes to kind of set up a first meeting date for you all to come together and begin those discussions.
I looked at the ordinance to see what we're going to do, and if we are really serious about it, art needs time to develop. And so, we need to make sure that the, the people that serve on this commission have long enough terms that they can accomplish what they set out to do. So, instead of talking about one or two-year terms, I think in this ordinance, we should make it three and four, maybe even longer than that, so that they have a chance to work it out and see, because I'm not going to tell them what to do, because they've got the ideas. But I am interested in that they have the time in which to do it. So, I would like to see that our resolution give them the time to do it. So, when we discuss it at our council meeting, I would assume that we will be talking about three and four-year, or maybe longer terms rather than just one or two, like I think that Blue Springs and some of the others had. So, to me, that's very important. If we're going to have a good Arts Council, we've got to give them time to grow.
I'm in agreement with that. That's well thought out.
I agree with that as well. And one other thing, I remember when we were talking about this commission, we didn't really know exactly where it would start, where it would go, where it would end up. And so, that's something that I hope as you guys are looking at planning things, you'll think about, and even look at other councils. If you need more people, you know, if you need a larger group to, to take on this challenge or things like that, I mean, those are things that we definitely, we didn't want to write it all out for you. We thought that you guys would be the best people to figure that out, to plan that. And, and of course, as with most things, you can write it one way, and if that doesn't quite work, we can tweak it a little.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To devtail that, a lot of discussion went into as far as the makeup, the dynamics of it, the logistics as far as time to, to serve and that and everything. And is, this is all brand-new to us. And we had a lot of different options on the table at that time. But I, I think I, I'm representing what most of the council felt, that we didn't want to stunt this in any way. We didn't want to make you folks stumble through this. We wanted to give you enough time. So, you know, during our discussions, I remember a three-year, or was it a two? I, I totally agree with, with making the terms three years. But we also were open to letting this transform and become what it needs to become. Nothing is set in stone, at least that was the sentiments of the discussions that I had. But we didn't want to stunt the growth of it by making it so restrictive. But if it needs, if it needs something tweaked down the road, I don't see a problem with, I'll speak for myself, I have no problem of allowing those tweaks to happen.
Coming from this, this is all about using our creativity and the gifts and the talents that are, that are locked away in the city that maybe we don't know are there. And another aspect to this, I'm, I'm very excited, as I read the, the different qualifications from the people that are sitting around the table here, I was really, I was really impressed. And some, one of the other aspects that maybe we could look at on planning and zoning, we talked about, when we're looking at our city, how do you know when you get into Raymore? Is there a theme to our architecture or our landscape or, you know, in addition to all the things that we're going to, you know, this group's going to come up with, of activities? But when you get to a certain part in 58, how do you know you're in Raymore? And to have some of those larger pieces or, or some kind of, something that lets you know, hey, this is a, this is a place where people have active minds that are growing and creative, and this place is, is going to continue to grow people's minds and creativity. And I think that would be something, so we, you know, obviously, there are parts of our city where there's, there's county land, but really, on that 58, there's that opportunity to show, you know, welcome to Raymore and look what kind of things are here, as opposed to maybe something you haven't found yet. Thank you.
Artistic Operations, oh, thank you. I'm the Director of Artistic Operations for the Kansas City Symphony. And one of the things that I think we are really missing in this community is the opportunity to get professional companies in Kansas City to come here. We are not far away from what is becoming a cultural mecca of the Midwest. And many of the arts organizations in Kansas City want to do outreach, they want to come into communities, and we just have to ask. I'm amazed that the symphony hasn't played here. I'm constantly pushing and saying, "Let's go out, let's play in Raymore." It's a wonderful community, it's an audience that's untapped. And we do outreach all over the metro area. So, really, part of the commission needs to be asking for those resources that are available to us. These professional companies want to come out, they just need to be asked. So, I think as a committee, it's one of the many things that we can do to really help bring arts to our community, so.
If I could ask you a little bit more about that, what kind of facilities would they need to be able to come out here and do those sorts of things?
So, for the symphony to come out and play, typically, it needs to be through the school. So, the school kind of has to make that ask. And again, it's a good way to tie in our youth into this. But you need support for, for a place to play. So, an auditorium, very similar to what the high school has, would be large enough to do. And then, the resources of really getting the community involved and backing this idea of having a performing arts company come out and play, because they're not going to want to come if we can't guarantee that we're going to pack the house. I know the symphony in particular does performances, and all the proceeds belong to the presenter. So, if the Arts Commission wanted to do it as a fundraiser, that is a possibility. And then, all of that money would be used for the Arts Commission. then all of that money would be used for the Arts Commission to use how they needed or music, I mean, if we tied it into some sort of music education or something.
And I think we do have some projects that are coming down the pike. We've been talking about an outdoor amphitheater, and I think some of the civic center things might turn out to be that way, but that's a little bit down the road.
Well, yeah, I mean, something like a civic center or a performing arts center would open up your possibilities, it would be endless at that point.
And that's great that you have the knowledge of the symphony and that they have the funding to do that kind of outreach. Not to be a wet blanket, but a lot of performing groups don't have that. So, let's not think that they're going to come free, all of them. And those that can, terrific. And I know Missouri Arts Council sends traveling troops around and that kind of thing, but there needs to be a budget, too.
Another thing I want to add, it's probably one of the most voiced things that I've heard from people, is there's nothing to do in Raymore. So, I think that would help bring something to Raymore to do, other than a meal out or go to a bar.
Other comments?
One thing that's on the agenda we've not touched on, I think we've hit everything else, but a council liaison, and I know that's been a sore spot with other boards in the past, my opinion, this is a perfect time to ask our new board if they would like a council liaison, just to get the conversation started. If they don't want it, then I would go with that vote, and if they want one, then I say we talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that. That's something that I've been thinking about, too. I think it's, it might be premature for that. I think the natural progression would be to let these folks meet together, elect their own chair or however they do that. I assume they'll do it like, something like the PNZ or the Park Board or the BOA, somebody that chairs the meeting and runs parliamentary and all of that. And then, let them decide at that point, but you know, keep that in your mind, that, you know, we do give that option to our other commissions and boards that a liaison exists. And what the liaison is supposed to function as on all of those boards is a line of communication between the two boards. Okay, now, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, in years past, that that is the function of our administrative person. And I totally agree with that, but I also agree with the other side of the equation and the discussion. If that's what you folks want, let us know, you know, and then let us discuss the merits and pitfalls of being involved in that, because it just, we choose not to be on the PNZ as a body for specific reasons. But, the purpose of a liaison is not to guide, okay? I will say this definitively tonight, not to guide, not to influence, not to strong-arm, but to be the relationship of communication between the two bodies. And we would make certain that that was on their, one of their early agendas for their discussion, so that we could report back to council accordingly.
More of a question, Mr. Fearburn, what, since the talk has kind of died down, what is, what's the next step to move forward? What are you suggesting?
Next step is, as soon as the Arts Commission can gather in the lobby here, Ms. Howe will have an informal first meeting of the Arts Commission for the City of Raymore to determine when they would like to have their first meeting.
At the risk of repeating myself, ooh rah, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right, if there is no other discussion, all right, get on out there. Get your first meeting scheduled. Best of luck to you. All right, the second item of tonight's work session is the Civic Center Workshop Number Three. SFS Architecture will lead the third and final council work session to continue the process of determining program elements that go into civic, city civic center, being considered by the council. Sonia?
Are we going to invite the Park Board members that are here to come up and join us at the tables for this part? If you're on the Park Board and you're here tonight, will you come up and join us at
Okay. Park Board members, if you'd just introduce yourselves.
I'm Monique Lewis, and I'm from Ward Three.
Sheldon Castleman, I'm from Ward One.
Melinda Haudishell.
Thank you.
And thank you for inviting us.
Again, this is workshop number three, the final workshop concerning the Civic Center. And that's about all I've got, and I'll turn it over to Carrie to lead the discussion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the council and Park Board. That was really interesting, hearing some of the Arts Commission discussion, and see a lot of synergies with what we've been talking about with the Civic Center, so it was exciting to hear. Tonight, we have a lot of information to show to you. We're going to just quickly run through the agenda. We're going to go through our mission statement real quick. We have, we wanted to just relook at the concept plans that we presented at the last workshop, just to refresh our base memory of what those concepts were. We have a revised new concept based on the comments that we received from you all at that last workshop. Then, we wanted to also refresh your memory on our visual preference exercise, some of the images that you liked, so we wanted to kind of summarize the results of that. And then, we do have a three-dimensional model, very conceptual level of the new concept that we want to run by you as well. And then, of course, we have cost information, that's always exciting to talk about. And then, we want to end with this next steps and this discussion about potentially looking at sites, if you want to proceed into that next stage of the study. So, the mission statement is, the Raymore Civic Center will create a place to gather and will promote a sense of community through an affordable and flexible environment that accommodates a variety of activities and programs for all ages. So, these, I think at the last workshop, we had three concepts that we presented, and I think the council really narrowed it down to the two of the concepts that they really preferred, and there were a variety of reasons for that. With the concept on the top, Concept B, I think there was a lot of comments about how it was very easily phased. We could very easily build the community wing first and then add the more recreational wing at a later date, if it was desired to do that. Also, just the expansion of the plan was very easy to handle, and so, I think there were a lot of comments about that. The concept on the lower part of the slide, Concept C, I think there was a lot of discussion about how there was a lot of good visibility into the building, there was really good access, visual access from the community wing to the exterior, some dynamic forms, I think people commented on. But, this one didn't have, wasn't as easily phased and wasn't as easily expandable. So, what we've done tonight is take the two concepts and kind of take the best qualities of both and try to meld it into a single concept. And I forgot to mention, with me tonight is Kwame Smith and Blake Naumann. So, they, we've all been working hard on this, and I'm going to turn it over to Kwame to run through the new concept.
Good evening, council and Park Board members. So, just to follow up on what Carrie had talked about, we basically went back, looked at the sort of those key components from the last two plans, the ability to phase, the ability to easily expand, and still retaining the visual access and sort of the interesting views from the community rooms and from the more public spaces as well. So, this represents Phase One of the new concept layout. It really retains a lot of the same spatial relationships as Option C, but we went with more of a rectilinear form, which allows us to easily expand and phase. So, when Phase One is built, it still reads and feels like a complete building, a complete building, as opposed to reading as a building that seems partially done. And so, we still have our 300-person community rooms that are off here, off of the single-loaded hall space that has visual access to the exterior. Our support space kitchens are off the back here. We have the 25-person classroom located down towards the end of that hall as well. The crafts, elevated craft stage area located more towards the lobby, which has the potential to be accessed to the lounge and lobby area as well. And then, we actually relocated the toilets up towards the lobby, where we felt this would be more appropriate, as opposed to where they were towards the very back of the community wing. And this, being Phase One, we're looking at this being potentially temporary staff area for the most part, that, as you'll see in the later phase, would be easily converted back to support space and/or storage as well. And so, Phase Two, you can see how that with this new configuration, we're able to add on to that pretty easily. And one thing to note with the plan, we've sort of used the lobby lounge area as a pivot point. So, it really makes for a flexible arrangement, given that we don't know where and what our site looks like at this point in time. This plan could be folded back into itself to create kind of a courtyard area that internalizes some of the outdoor space. If we have a, if we land on a site that has more generous views and generous landscaping, this plan could also fold back and open up again to take advantage of those. So, it really depends on the site and just keeping that in mind, that we wanted to make it as flexible as possible. So, with Phase Two, we would have the, again, the staff area moved into this spot here and it's permanent, rest in place. You still have your control point, and the gymnasium and showers are located on the paid members' area of the facility. Excuse me. And so, as you can see, we'll go to the next slide here, this also allows for very compact expansion as well without dramatically increasing the footprint of the building. So, we have the ability to expand at the members' area as well, and then also some expansion that can happen at the community, on the community wing as well. So, as Carrie mentioned earlier, we wanted to just sort of recap the discussions that we had and the visual preference exercise that was done at our last workshop. And we looked at, you remembered, the building massing, entry types, and building materials. So, what we did was basically went back, took a look at the boards, and came up with what we thought were the top three, based on how many green dots landed on those images for each of these categories. And then, we basically extrapolated from that just some simple takeaways that we thought these images represented. So, for building massing, we have simple forms that were brought about here, hierarchy of massing, and canopy-type structures, as you can see here. And then, on building entry, some of the takeaways there, again, with strong identity, overhang and sheltering feel to the entry of the building, and then height and presence as well. So, these three images sort of capture the essence of these three. And these were, again, were the ones that rose to the top during the exercise under building entry. And then, the third category, the building materials, the top three again was, that represented wood, transparency and glass, and natural stone as well. So, from that, we did take a very preliminary conceptual look at the concept plan and generated a three-dimensional image of that. This kind of represents the exterior, that it starts to incorporate that wood, glass, and materials, and you have your height and entry that has presence to it, and overhang and sheltering feel as well. And then, I'll let Blake take us into the 3D model that we've put together for this. And so, this model gives you an idea of what Phase One would look like as a standalone building. And then, Phase Two would come online. And as you can see, once Phase Two comes online, it really helps to create kind of that courtyard area, again, using that lobby point as a pivot point, so making that plan as flexible, depending on what our site might look like, allowing this concept to react to the site itself. And then, we did look at what happens as we look past Phase Two into the future for future expansion as well. So, you can see how on the member's side, there's the ability to expand. There's the ability to expand in a very compact fashion. And then, as we go to the community wing side, we also have the expansion capability And then, the upcoming, this just gives you a quick rendition of what the interior experience might be with the current concept that we've looked at. And I'll turn it back over to Carrie here. And I'll turn it back over to Kerry here, okay?
Before we move to the costs, just want to see if there's any questions or comments that you have about the plan, the exterior images, anything that we've presented so far, any thoughts or questions you might have? One thing I'd...
I just want to say that I think you've done a great job of taking those two concepts that we pulled out and putting them together. I can see the elements that I like so much about C in there in terms of having that view and that openness to the outside, and then also the compact forms from B and how things are easily phased. It really does show up in that, in this new concept.
I did want to mention on the plan that Kwame talked about the flexibility of that plan depending on the site that we look at. Also, there's potential for an entry sequence really on either side of that building, whether it's through the courtyard into the lobby space or from the other direction. So I think, just depending on the site, I think there's a lot of flexibility with this plan. All right, we'll move to the cost information. We've broken this down into the two phases, and you'll see that there's, under Phase One, we have building construction costs at the top at about 6.1 million. And then the second figure is site development and soft costs. So that's parking and all the site grading, and of course, some of that's very estimated at this point since we don't really have a site. So it's kind of our best guess at that point. That's something that if you decide to go further into the study and look at sites, we'd want to refine that number. We tend to be a little bit more conservative at this point with those costs, but that's, that 2.75 is site development. It's also all the development costs such as expenses and furniture and equipment, everything that needs to go into the building. Those soft costs are the things that we like to say, if you took the build, took the top off the building and turned it upside down, everything fell out of the building, that's all the soft costs. So we're at 8.8 million for the Phase One. Then Phase Two, we're looking at about 3.8 million for the building construction cost and about 1.7 for site development and site and soft costs. We're a total of 5.5. So that's kind of where we are at this point, based on what we know today. Like I said, the site development and soft costs is probably the biggest unknown at this point that we would want to look at more, look at in further detail if you decide to move to that next phase. Are there any questions about the costs?
Does Phase One include any assumption on land acquisition as a number built into that?
That's a good question. We did not include any site acquisition costs.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. I should have mentioned that. Good question.
Thank you, sir. Kerry, does, do the costs change, or is there anything that would disallow reordering the phases or reordering components of the phases? In other words, if the council were to decide, well, we consider Phase Two to be a priority over Phase One, does that change anything?
No. I, the only thing that is a little bit, we're unsure about is that's the site development cost because whatever, whatever you choose to do is Phase One, obviously there's going to be the majority of the site development costs included in that Phase One. So it could, if you switch and with Phase Two going first, that number might go up because there's going to be more site development, whatever Phase One is. Does that make sense? Okay. The other thing I didn't mention was, we have projected these costs out to, we usually project our costs to the midpoint of construction to capture any inflation or escalation. And so we have looked at, these costs are assumed to be January of 2017 for the midpoint of construction. That's just our assumption at this point.
Just to be sure that I totally understand, when we were looking at the 3D pictures, there were several different add-on parts that he clicked on. Was all of that considered Phase Two?
No.
Okay. Can you clarify that a little bit?
That's, yes. Just the Phase Two, the future expansion pieces that we were showing, we really weren't sure what those priorities were. We were just trying to see how it could expand, so we have not estimated those smaller pieces as part of Phase Two. So this diagram that Blake has up right now, that is the Phase Two that we've estimated. Good question.
Good question. How tight is the building construction figures? If that's extrapolated out to 2017, construction material costs are going to fluctuate. Is this general market at this point? Does it take consideration of different materials that may or may not be used?
Well, we're, right now, we're seeing inflation of about 4% per year. And so I believe that's the numbers, just assume over the entire construction cost, about 4% per year. Yeah, there's, inflation is starting to go up, so it's kind of a guess at this point when you get out that far. But we feel like that's probably a pretty good estimate based on what we know at this point.
Sorry. What is the estimated area that you need to build these building constructions on? How much acre do you need, thinking about the parking also?
Yeah, we did take a, just a quick look at that and what we were coming up with for, if you were to build out to Phase Two, and assuming about a parking that can accommodate about 150 spots, we were looking at a, sort of a minimum acreage range of about six to eight, or a little under eight acres.
That is not an awful lot. And you're counting a parking lot for about 150 cars?
150 spots, yep.
Thank you.
Of course, you know, that depends on the topography of the site and what's, what all's going on. So that's really kind of a minimum. If it was a nice, flat site and not a lot of green space around it, but obviously it would be nice to have more space, especially if you're looking at, you know, an amphitheater potentially that would be associated with this building. So there's, it's kind of a minimum.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? Excuse me, I keep on forgetting. In Phase One, you're developing the community rooms and the classroom, and there is a kitchen there, and there is a lounge entrance. And then in Phase Two, you're developing the gymnasium, weight room, fitness room. Am I understanding that right?
Correct, yes.
Is there eight, maybe, maybe Mr. Mayor can tell us that. What is your time, or is it premature to ask? Okay, they're going to go into that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Staff would see a couple of background points relative to this discussion. The election, of course, none of this could happen without some sort of a bond issue being passed. The council has had considerable discussions relative to a no-tax increase bond issue. Right now, we estimate, if we were to do it early, that that would be about, let's call it $9 million, but fees would have to come out of that. We've been working pretty hard with Mr. Goffey, the city's financial advisor. We would be able to put that bond issue off until as late as the election for it, April of 2017, which certainly gives the council time to make whatever decisions they would need to make. Backing up from that, more than likely, if there was going to be an element of that no-tax increase bond issue that was associated with this particular project, we would have to be, once again, moving on it if you would by July of this year. So there are also some months involved here where we could make some decisions internally, if you will, as to how the city council wanted to proceed. The second item associated with this is that there is the Phase One and there's the Phase Two here, but there are also those other elements, as Kerry pointed out, for instance, an amphitheater, how these would plug in, the short form being, and I know Kerry's back there someplace looking, the short form being, the question being asked, do all of these elements actually have to be under one roof, or could they be located throughout the city? And what synergies would be lost? And that's a question, that's another discussion, lengthy discussion, I think, that the council needs to have as to how those would work out, with or without input from SFS. Some of the logical steps, just trying to walk through this, determine what elements you absolutely want and the order that you absolutely want them in. A long way here, as far as the last couple of meetings, to get to these two phases, but there may still be points in time when the council would like to see some things added or removed from that. And you all have the card exercise with you to determine what those costs would actually be. Determine locations where these elements could, should be located in the city, based on existing property or available property. Determine costs associated with each based on those final issues. Meeting to discuss a no-tax increase bond issue. Staff would see that meeting as being much broader than coming together to talk about a no-tax increase bond issue just for a civic center. Anytime we bring those forward, the civic center needs are weighed against other needs that the council may feel take a priority with the city. How does that impact what this final project would look like, if at all? And then finalize what a no-tax increase bond issue would be. We would see all of those elements needing to come into play even possibly before we get to needing any sort of outside services of Phase Three with SFS, or if it has so dramatically changed, you know, looking again at what our needs are as far as consultant input are concerned. Staff would probably recommend that you allow us to put together the new and concrete numbers associated with the no-tax increase bond issue, and that we schedule that particular meeting with you all to discuss debt capacity and debt in general as a component before we move to the next step, which is Step One on here. In other words, not to lose any momentum, but to proceed methodically and take a couple of months break here before we move forward to give staff time to get those final numbers together. That would be staff's recommendation at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I would support staff's recommendation. You know, I mean metaphorically, I feel like now that I've seen the car, I need to talk to the finance manager. And, you know, I, the, this general, the general obligation bond information is going to be very crucial. So discussing how we're going to come up with the money, how we're going to pay for things, and just understanding how we're ultimately going to have to go back to the voters, I think is an important primer that we kind of need refreshed on. And so I would concur that we need some time to kind of go over that and kind of just make sure everything's, you know, in a proper place, and we're all aware of the direction we're going.
Mr. Mayor, I believe staff's points are reasonable, and I support that exactly with what Mr. Moorhead has said too, so I...
I'm in agreement.
I'm going to sue Councilmember Moorhead and Kellogg for theft of intellectual property and plagiarism, and I concur with their comments.
Staff will proceed with putting together the numbers for no-tax increase bond issue and deadlines, timelines, and most of staff is working very, very hard to get me, in the next four weeks, those projects that we have heard from various council members at times and that they have out there. It is actually going to be a part of this year's CIP process, that we have CIP projects, and then we are going to prioritize those unfunded CIP projects into items that could possibly be on for a no-tax increase bond issue. And of course, the civic center is already in there. Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to mention before we move on that we really appreciate working with you all on this, and I've really enjoyed working with you. And as you kind of deliberate your next steps, if you have any questions or additional information you need from us, just let me know and we'll get you whatever else you need. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the list is citizen survey review.
Thank you, sir. I will call on Ms. Halk to make this presentation to you all.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here this evening to go over the ETC citizen survey with you all for 2015. In your packet, there was the draft survey that staff put together to highlight our recommended changes and some points of discussion for this evening. To give you the big picture on the draft that you received, the items in yellow are the ones the ETC uses to benchmark against other communities. So those are generally questions that we leave as they are, so we can continue to collect trends throughout the survey. You will see that there are some red line questions that staff recommended taking out, and then some green questions that we added. In general, the majority of the changes are just minor formatting changes to bring this more in line to how ETC is conducting the survey in all of their communities. So we're asking very similar questions to what everyone else is doing. Probably the biggest area for your feedback on this evening starts at question 24. And the items in purple are ones, it's on page 53 of your packet. There's a number of items that are highlighted in purple, and these are basically people providing input on the reasons that they decided to live here. As you know, with this survey, it's really important to make sure that we are very cognizant of the length of the survey. After so many pages, people won't fill it out anymore. And so our goal is to keep the survey at least no longer than it was in the past, which is seven questions, or seven pages. And so a lot of the deletions we've made have been to preserve some of that real estate. So we wanted to have a conversation about question 24 because we feel like there may be an opportunity to reduce the length of this question to create some space if you want to ask additional questions. And I think when you look through some of the items that are highlighted in purple, in general, we know the answers to those questions already, and so I want to make sure that us... us asking them is providing you relevant information to help you make decisions, which is the point of this survey. So things like, do you move to the city of Raymore for employment opportunities, access to quality shopping, availability of transportation options, availability of cultural activities, which we may want to leave in, based on the conversation we just had, access to restaurants and entertainment, or did you move here to be near friends and family? And so I'm just looking for feedback from you all, whether you'd like to leave those in, which is great if you want to, or if you want to look at removing those line items from that question bank.
I had one question I would like to ask you. On number six, where it said, on a scale of whatever it is, how safe do you feel in your neighborhood after dark? I think it all depends on whether there are streetlights there or not, because out in my area, it would not be safe, because we have no streetlights. But in some of the more, what I would call congested areas, they have streetlights, and so it would be a different matter. So I think you ought to say something in there about streetlights, because there are parts of Raymore that are in, as I say, we're in the city limits, but we do not have lights, we do not have what I would call the amenities that the rest of the council enjoys.
Sure. You know, that's definitely something we can look at. On question number nine, on the next page, there is an item, it's letter H, that says adequacy of city street lighting, and so we are able to take the answer on that question and cross-reference it with this.
You think that would take care of it, then?
I'll ask ETC to see if it would, and if not, I can take a look at if we need to add an additional streetlight question over that segment, but that's a very good point.
Meredith, I'm supportive of actually, back to question 24. Leaving the purple shaded questions in. I was actually hoping, prior to the meeting, to add a question regarding needs for seniors and the disabled. So I'm actually, but some of these other questions also kind of compound with that.
Is there something in particular you're hoping to find out from your question about your needs of seniors and the disabled, so I can help frame that question?
Well, it kind of corresponds with G, availability of transportation options. I jumped over and looked at availability of public transportation on question 25, but I wanted more specificity. Based on prior conversations, we've had communication regarding seniors, but also I've had citizens ask about, that if have family members or loved ones who are disabled, and their access around the community. So I thought that might be a nice way to gain a little more information specific to that.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, or comment, I think one thing that's done well here is, you've removed a lot of the redundant questions, and the questions that were added are new information that hasn't been addressed elsewhere, and are providing the council information that we can, you know, make decisions based on what people want, and we certainly need to know what they want to be able to move in those kind of directions. So we're taking some of the work off their plate with this, that was redundant and boring, and putting more interesting questions that they'll feel like they'll want to participate in. I think that's well done.
Thank you. Other?
I think, I mean, with all of the things taken out, it seems to me like it would fit on seven pages.
I think it will, yeah. It's certainly longer here, because we have all the deletions still indicated.
I would be in favor of leaving in the purple things, if it still fits. Unless there are other more relevant things that we need to leave. I think that that could be good information, and like you said, especially the cultural activities and the arts. Hopefully, we'll see that number change in the next few years.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, yeah, that's my input. If the purple things fit, leave them in there. If they don't, then it does make sense to take them out, if we need to replace them with more relevant. But it seems like it's much more compact and less redundant.
Any other questions that you all think are missing, or information you'd like me to look at adding, when I go back to ETC?
I had one housekeeping thing. I think, on number 11, under Parks and Recreation, under N, I think it's supposed to be fees charged. I think it's supposed to be a D.
Yes, I had added that D. Thank you for catching that.
My concern, or question, is as far as the household dynamics, when was the last time we did a statistical survey of our citizens? Two years ago. We do this every two years. Okay. Would, I don't know if we'd gain any more accurate information out of the dynamics of the approximately, how many years lived here in Raymore, the incomes and stuff like that. Do we, I guess, do you think we need that? I'm going to ask the council.
I think we do need that information. I think, given the change in the economy and the cycle that we've just been through, I think there's probably been some significant changes in the last two years. And I think, I think leaving that question in there will bear that up.
And if I may, a lot of that information is very, very important to the cross-tabbing, when you start looking at how different groups have answered different questions. It helps with our comparison.
Let's just say, these are customary control questions, so it actually, if there's a dramatic shift or not, that helps establish baselines, when you do the statistical analysis.
Maybe this is what he just said, but there are certainly vast, I've looked at a lot of databases that are out there, whether they be for realtors, or economic development, or whoever is trying to find the information, and, but we want to have the information that's relevant to who actually filled out the forms, and that'll give us a better understanding in two years of how to maybe retailer the questions to get more people that are maybe not the type of people that are filling it out, to participate as well.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, and this may seem silly to you, to people who do this a lot, but looking at some of the information that Kevin was talking about, if we're concerned about learning more about what our elderly population wants, would it make sense for us to have more than just a 65-plus category? Would it make any sense for us to see kind of where all the other age ranges are by 10s, and then 65-plus is just to the end of eternity, I guess? You know, do we want to break that down a little more? Do you think that would give us good information, or not?
I think that's a great question to talk to ETC about, and we can see how they've handled that in other communities, but it's a very valid point.
Maybe in addition to age, also maybe how many vehicles you have in your home, or how many drivers you have in your home, that might give information. There certainly, there are lots of people that, maybe, my sister's disabled, she's been disabled since early on, but she can't drive, and these are pretty relevant questions to her, and people like that, that have different situations, and it doesn't, she lives in a building where no one in the building has an ability to drive, but there are a huge range of ages. So that might be something to add, as far as getting more specific, and she's not in Raymore, so, but just, for instance, just getting how many drivers are in the home, or if we want to know specifically about transportation, more detail. Do I have one? Oh, do we have one? I don't know.
I'm in agreement with Sonya on this one. It's kind of a no-brainer, is we look to the aging population, and really bearing down, and getting a good handle on what their needs are. I think we do need more specificity in those questions, and we need to break it down.
I'm in support of that. I had a question, Mr. Fearborn, for personal knowledge. This is a really good, comprehensive survey, in my opinion, of gray dust, and what we've done for a long time. Do we do, is there another instrument that we use for, what would you like to see? What do you want us to do in the future?
Of course, the civic center survey.
That's one of them.
And we tend to, the past has been, when there was a targeted issue, and most of those have been around parks, with the exception of the civic center survey, which is a little bit broader. We did do some surveys. At the end of this, I'm going to talk to you about, the council has budgeted for another targeted survey, possibly being conducted this year. That's the way we've been doing those. One of the things that Meredith really tried to get to on this one, when she was working with the department heads, was drilling down some of those vague questions, and changing them so that we could get a little bit more targeted information. Before, you know, we would get the information back that people didn't like congestion, well, where don't you like congestion? Are we talking about the bridge? And did you know that the bridge isn't in Raymore? And we can't do anything about that, sort of a, that would be a help, to have that information back from people. And we do get very targeted information in the comments section sometimes, but some of that information is wrong, and of course, it's not statistically valid. One of the things that I would possibly recommend to the council for your consideration in next year's budget is, SNAP surveys can be very, very helpful, as long as they're statistically valid. And I may be plugging some money in, in case we wanted to do a SNAP survey on something, whatever that may be, something that comes out of a strategic plan, that the council would like more information on from the public. Obviously, you can't do them all the time, but my intention was to possibly put something in next year's budget to conduct that type of survey.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Not a comment, but a question. Exactly what is a SNAP survey?
Done, this is a planned survey. A significant component of this survey is benchmarking and comparison. See how we're moving, the direction that we're moving. A SNAP survey, it's on a topic, you're putting it out, you're getting your information back, you're not going to do it again, more than likely. It's, what would you like to see on this particular thing, just like the civic survey. Civic survey was an extensive, but it was still a SNAP survey. We're not going to do another one to see how we're progressing.
So, is there an opportunity to put the transportation questions in here, and not have to do an entirely separate survey? Or do those need to be two separate things?
Just some quick points. $3,000 is budgeted for. The ETC has confirmed that number to us again. That would get you about a two-to-three-page survey, that would be statistically valid coming back. At this point, I don't know, that is entirely up to the council. If we can make the room for it, if we're talking about for senior transportation, a two-to-three-question issue, we are probably, we could probably put that in here as its own dedicated section, with some other items, like, do you have transportation in your home? And we may be able to fit that in here, I'm not sure. Meredith indicated to me that, when she was in Riverside, she did this in Riverside, which is why she's been delegated, and did it very well, but they actually had a nine-page survey. Obviously, cost them more, and I think you had indicated that you did get comments back about the length of that survey. If we get much over the seven pages, we're going to lose people, and it's going to be tougher to get responses back, and it's going to be tough to get to that 400 threshold. But if all's we're talking about is a few questions, things could be rearranged. And if the council was willing, of course, if those questions were more important than, say, a couple of the purple questions, we could possibly drop those off as well, as we needed the space.
Councilmember Morehead?
Well, and actually, I'm glad that got brought up. I mean, that was my suggestion on question 24, but some of the purple questions actually collaterally relate to the issues that we had talked about regarding seniors and the disabled, and transportation. So, I mean, before we, you know, do anything with the intended, or at least budgeted, separate survey, yes, if we have the space, I'd like to see more questions added in. I mean, I'd already mentioned maybe adding something in about options, but a couple extra questions would just help us get closer to the answer we're seeking. And then, from there, I mean, I guess we technically have the budgeted line item to go further, but I'd like to see what we can do right out of the gate, before we have to get to that.
One thing that just kind of popped into my head, and it may be a bad idea, it may be a good idea, but it's an idea. Everyone receives a water bill, and we could maybe test pilot some questions, one question a month on a water bill, and that way you know you're not getting more than one response per person. But maybe pilot a question, and see if people even answer it, and then maybe in two years, it might be a question that's worth adding. And I'm not, I'm not talking about any particular topic here whatsoever, just, it would be another avenue, besides putting something on the website, hey, what do you think about this? And then you don't have any control over who is filling it out, but everyone pretty much will not, most of the citizens receive a water bill, and that might be an interesting experiment, even, but maybe not something to base what we do right away, but it might be something that we could put into a survey in a two-year, if we've done maybe 10 questions over two years, and say, hey, this generated some interest, and some activity, and brought some people to meetings, and maybe it's worth getting a better statistical analysis of it in a couple of years, where we've actually budgeted for that particular format, where it's this kind of format, but not that.
Mr. Mayor, I wondered about questions having to do with stormwater. EPA is going to tell us what we're going to do, and why do we need to burden the people with it, when we're going to have to do whatever it is EPA says, regardless of whether they like it or whether they don't?
Because the EPA told us we have to ask them questions.
That makes sense to me.
And we want to do what they want us to do.
I'd like to ask a check for understanding question. We did budget $3,000 for a transportation survey that is separate from this one, and that's still on the table, is that correct?
That is correct. And I'd kind of ask for a point of clarification here. What I think I am hearing is that you would like staff to try to develop three to four questions, maybe four to five questions, that might hit the intent of that survey, but if it leads to other questions, or doesn't answer adequately what you all are looking for, then you want us to move forward with bringing a separate targeted survey for senior transportation? That's what I thought I heard, but staff still needs clarification.
I think concern was that we don't end up with a 12-page survey.
Wrong survey, yeah, I agree.
I was just going to say, I agree with what you said, Mr. Fearborn. If we can fit questions in here, probably some of the most feedback I've gotten from people that I represent and word for, is about how silly it is to spend $3,000 on that survey. And so I would like to see some questions in here, and not, maybe not only transportation, but senior services, kind of, that was part of where the survey was going, was not to just look at transportation, but to look at what kinds of senior services we need in our community, whether it's partially the change in striping, or meals provided, or transportation. And that was one of the, that's kind of how I try to justify it with people who call and talk.
and talk to me about that. But absolutely, if we could fit that in here and meet those needs and save that $3,000, I think that would make people in our city quite, quite happy.
Mr. Fearborn, just bearing, getting my bearings time-wise here. So as you guys kind of reconfigure some of these, this, the structure here, roughly when would this go out?
Our goal is to have this out in February, so fairly quickly. I have actually a call with ETC tomorrow to finalize this survey, and so once we do that, they can turn it around very quickly.
And I think we can probably get that section worked out with ETC. I seem to remember in the early conversations that I had with them, that they had indicated that they have had sections that address some of these issues before. When I called them in to get the pricing for the, for the senior transportation survey, they actually have, and they've probably got some priority questions that we could plug in. We have to get it back to the council to approve final draft. It would be one of those, we send it to you, any final comments that you may have, we would incorporate those and then send it out.
Just one more final question. I think I remember when we talked with planning and zoning about the urban chicken issue, that there was discussion about kind of pulling the community on that. Is that something that we want to consider trying to squeeze in here also or not?
Mr. Mayor, I want, you're talking about transportation and the different things and notifying people. I want to share something with you. Years ago, when I was postmaster, we were having trouble with one of our rural carriers getting across the bridge from Belton to Raymore during their lunch period. So I had to write to my bosses and tell them why we wanted to change in the line of travel for transportation. It had to go to Kansas City and from Kansas City, it went to Chicago. And Chicago says, when you have traffic like ours, write us again. So I guess I would say then, compared, when you're talking about traffic, compared to what? You know, is it, if five cars go by in my street, I think I've got a heavy traffic. But that's not the same thing as others. So we need to figure, how long does it take you to get through Raymore? How many stoplights do you have to wait at before you can get through town? Maybe we need to compare, know what it is that we're comparing with, but just to say, well, we've got a lot of traffic, compared to whom, to what? So I, I always think of that, compared to Chicago, do we have much traffic? No.
Mr. Mayor, leading back to Councilmember Delgaughad's question, I'm not opposed to posing the question. I do believe during the work session, it was discussed that we wanted to explore just the, you know, what is the community interest in this? Although I would say, I think we would lean a little more priority-wise toward the transportation issue, just because if we can do this and not spend $3,000, that's more important than the question, the chicken question in and of itself. So I mean, I'm cool with throwing it in if we can get it, but let's not, let's not throw out the bigger, bigger boulder to deal with the pebble.
Other comments? Have you got enough marching orders?
We have our marching orders, sir. Thank you.
Do we have reason to go into executive session?
We have no reason to go into executive session, sir.
You have no reason?
Yes, I do have one thing. I would imagine that many of you here are fans or history buffs like myself. And I think back to my short time on the council, and I think we've had some heated issues, we've fought and argued and have been passionate about on both sides. Think about that and then go watch History Channel's new series, Sons of Liberty, and think about what those gentlemen went through, about giving up their fortunes and maybe having their heads on the chopping block in front of King George. And it really puts things into perspective. I watched two nights of that and I was just fascinated. Outstanding program, if you like history, you'll really enjoy it. It's, the language is more modernized so you can understand it, but just to think about how our country was started and the things that those people struggled with versus what we struggle with sometimes, it's just an entirely different world. It's kind of the Chicago traffic and our traffic analogy.
Okay, I'm saying a motion to adjourn.
We need to go into executive session?
Oh. Okay. We're in adjournment. Thank you, everybody.